Good afternoon, everyone. Today is March 11, 2025, for the record. It's 3:00 PM, and this is a City of Prescott voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do you have any announcements or introductions today?
Yes, I do. Please remember, public out there, that it's time for your household hazardous waste pickup. This is ongoing through the 28th of March, but you must register online at preskatrecycles.com or call 928-777-1116. Also, note that the Bullard, is it Bullard or Ballard? Ballard installation is going on in the areas of South Cortez and Gurley, as well as Cortez and Union, so please follow the detour signs. This will continue on until the 18th of March. And then next month, it will be on Monizuma and Willis from April 14th to the 22nd. All detours will be marked, so please be careful. And that's it.
Thank you very much. We'll now have an invocation from Deacon Mark Weber with the Sacred Heart Roman Catholic Parish, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance conducted by councilman Moore.
Almighty and eternal God, help us to remember that you are with us always. We pray that you grant our council the humility of servant hearts and the gratitude of those gifted with responsibilities. We ask that you give them and those who support them the wisdom to discern the many facets of complicated issues, the courage to make sometimes difficult decisions, and a peace that is earned in working for the common good. We also ask that you continue to bless all those who work together every day to keep our city safe, healthy, and thriving. We are grateful for their professional communication, collaboration, and cooperation. You were with the men and women who founded the town that grew through many generations to become this city that we love. We remember their names as we walk our streets and visit our lakes, parks, and museums. You were with them then. Be with us today. Remain with us tomorrow. For you are God, the same yesterday, today, forever.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Roll call, please. Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
We now have a presentation from the Americor Civil Conservation Corps from Prescott. I think you're taking up the whole left side of the council chamber, so good for you.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Joe Baynes, Recreation Services Director, members of the public as well. Ellen Basher, here to my left, was instrumental in bringing this group here for this year. And I'm not going to steal their thunder. I'll let them introduce that. But, boy, I tell you, from the day they showed up, right after the first of the year, they hit the ground running. Never been a task where they said, eh, I don't think I want to do that. They're, you know, 100%. And a great group, but we couldn't be prouder. We hope we can accomplish this again. Ellen, you want to say a couple things?
Yeah, absolutely. Hello, council. My name's Ellen Basher. I'm our outdoor learning coordinator, and it's just really been an honor to work with this crew. They're going to tell you a little bit more about how NCCC works, but I just want to echo what Joe said, that this crew has committed so much time and energy to incredible positive impacts in this community. We hear great feedback from our recreation users and families and the events that they've participated in. And my hopes are that we can continue this partnership with NCCC for many years to come and continue to have this great opportunity for our community.
And we'll turn it over to Elias. He's their crew leader. And Elias, here's your control. Control. Awesome.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and city council, and also the member of the public who are here, who we've had the privilege of serving over these past few weeks and will continue to have that privilege over the next four or so. So I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Elias. I am the team leader of the NCCC crew here, and I'm from Brooklyn, New York, so a long way from home. First time in Arizona, it's been pretty great. Our team is called Water Six. It's kind of a little bit of just a designation for us. I just wanted to introduce you to us, that, you know, if you see us around, you know, you know what we've been doing and how we're doing our best for this community. So to begin a little bit about our program, it's for, you know, young people aged 18 to 26. And, you know, we have a few different designations that people refer to us by, sometimes the Peace Corps in America, sometimes the Conservation Corps, but we're what's called NCCC, which is the National Civilian Community Corps. And we go around in teams of six to 12, live together, eat together, work together for 10 months, and do service work on three to five projects that entire time, all in kind of the name of service and also earning an educational stipend at the end for further, you know, use in life. But a lot of it is about community service and also just bonding as a unit and kind of learning how to live together and live with others in a kind of a good coexistence and symbiotic way. So as a brief introduction to the team, who's over there, you're right, they are taking up the entire row back there. But we have a brief video that I hope we'll play. We'll see. If not, it's fine. But it was prepared and posted on our national, on our regional Instagram account, and so it's worth kind of a watch. Hopefully it plays. We'll see. No?
Go the other way.
The other way.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, there we go. It's nice. All right. Thank you. That was massively prepared by our CRRs. Uh-oh, Joanne, I need you again.
It's still bringing up.
Okay. Great. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Yeah, so we are Water Six. We were previously in Grand Junction, Colorado, working on an old defunct train station and getting it prepared to go back into service on the California Zephyr Line. You know, it was built in 1906, it's a stunning building, and we spent six weeks working on it, removing debris, preparing it for professionals to come through and do masonry and woodwork and everything like that, and eventually have it restored to Amtrak service. But here in Prescott, you know, one of the big, I guess, kind of pulls of this project for me was how dynamic it was, and that's because of the diverse range of work that we do. A lot of it is invasive species removal, wildfire prevention in the local parks and green spaces, especially Acker and Willow Creek. We also recently did a short stint at Butte Creek with Prescott College. That figure at the bottom, 86,000 pounds of vegetation removed, is now, since outdated, we're now more around 100,000 pounds, just in roughly a week since this presentation was prepared. But it's been a real pleasure to, like, work under our site supervisors and the local rec services department to learn how to best tackle these issues. We've also been working with Public Works and Matt Killeen on erosion control problems in the local lake areas and the parks, especially in preparation for the monsoon season. We've taken a more, a different approach to erosion control with rock dams and gabian baskets, trying to kind of meld erosion control with the natural environment. If you've taken a visit to the local adult center recently, you'll see that it has, the front area has had a facelift and that there are basins now for water, and, you know, it looks, it looks pretty good. And it's been kind of, it's been just a real pleasure to get to explore all of these green spaces in Prescott and, you know, serve them as best we can and also do our best to secure their longevity. We've also worked a lot with the Rangers, who are in the audience today as well, with many of the youth here in Prescott. And, you know, we have worked for Nature Niños, a very fun first Saturday of the month event that helps connect families with local nature. We did it at Watson Lake and also at Quebler Park or Pioneer Park, I believe is Quebler Field at Pioneer Park. We've also worked, you know, just with the local elementary and middle schools and have helped prepare the local outdoor classrooms for, or have just, like, improved them, sunk tree stumps, and prepared local 88 accessible trails in the Community Nature Center. So it's been a real honor to be a part of these projects with this, these diverse range of site supervisors, and we've learned really a lot from them about just how to build trails, how to kind of tackle complex erosion problems and fire break problems, too. With the trails team, namely Andrew and Chris Hosking, we've maintained 0.7 miles of hiking trails in just a couple days. Most of our work was on the Peavine Trail, although we did do some work in Willow Lake, rewilding some social trails to protect the local bird species, from which I understand there are many, and some of which are endangered and, you know, important to protect. Peavine Trail, we helped construct gabian baskets and removed old culverts to improve the trail's ability to, like, to take the force of monsoon season, although the effectiveness will be, of course, tested when we are not here. In general, our program is kind of geared towards the idea of addressing community needs. We only come when we're asked, and I think that's one of the best parts of this program, is we respond, we provide, you know, eight pairs of extra hands for help that the city asks for, or the community asks for, rather. And so we've also done any kind of number of odd jobs, like shoveling snow with rec services at the library, or constructing bat boxes to address complaints about mosquito infestation in Penny's Wood Basin, to just general cleanup of, you know, nature, natural areas over the course of our, I want to say, eight weeks here now. And, you know, as Joe said, we try to do as much of it possible with a smile on our face, because we really do love the work that we do here. There's nothing really more fun than chainsawing all day, honestly. But, you know, the work isn't just chainsawing, it's also kind of getting to know the community members. And we've had some pretty kind of warm interactions with everybody, you know, who see us working on trails and, you know, it's just been a real kind of honor and pleasure to serve here in a community that has very much welcomed us with open arms. And so to conclude, you know, one of our main requirements is independent service, which means outside of normal work hours, you'll still see many, much of the team out in Prescott serving in different ways on the weekends. The team has done upwards of 175 hours, many of those with the local community compost, but also with other rec services programs like SNAP. And I believe we have a couple more coming up with fire alarm installation in preparation for fire season. And I just wanted to conclude with, like, a really kind of heartfelt thank you to everybody here who invited us to this council meeting and everybody on the rec services team, the Ranger team, and the Public Works team, who has kind of made our transition into this city as seamless as possible. It is difficult, you know, to come in for only three months, and then also it's somewhat sad, because you get to know people and then you have to leave. But I know that my team and I feel like we have kind of forged somewhat, something of a longstanding bond with the city that we have served for such a short time and are, have been really honored to do so. And so thank you for having us and thank you for being so welcoming.
Well, I certainly want to thank all of you. The amount of work and valuable project work that you've done is just quite remarkable. I mean, 50 tons of debris and you sure you can't stay a couple more weeks? We'd love to have you. But thank you for doing a little bit of preparation for our upcoming wildfire season. All the reduction in fuel load and other things that you've been working on are going to be very much appreciated once we hit one of our more risky wildfire seasons that are going to be coming up. So you guys have just done a remarkable job, and we're so appreciative to have you here. And thank you, Ellen, for recruiting these young people. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, Elias, I wanted to make mention also, I didn't realize that it was your crew that had cleaned out Acker Park, or at least did some work in Acker Park. I want to thank you. I'm part of a walking group of lots of women with our dogs, and we had commented, what happened? We've lived, I've lived there for years and years and years, and I've wanted to have that cleaned out like that just for safety issues. And thank you for doing that. You made a big impact on my neighborhood. I can't wait to go back and tell them who did it. Thank you.
Can we do a photo with everybody there, the mayor and Mayor Protem?
Yeah. Thank you. Yes.
Roll call, please. Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Roll call, please. Present. President.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Roll call, please. Present. President. 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 President.[1320.15]
One, two, three. Big smiles, you guys did a great job. All right, thank you.
All right, so we can keep this ball rolling. I'm going to just move us on to the open call to the public. City of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address the council regarding items that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on the topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do not have any green comment cards today, so we will go ahead and move on.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does any member of the council want to pull any items from consent for discussion? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8G.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Very good, we'll move on to liquor license.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 19 Remote Tasting Room Liquor License from Kenneth Wyatt Knock, applicant for Granite Mountain Distillery LLC, location 125 North Cortez Street. The application fee has been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Is the applicant present? Apparently not, so we'll move on to, I'll entertain a motion on this item. I think we have, what, two? Yeah, two motions.
Mayor, I moved to close the public hearing. Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, I move to recommend approval for liquor license number 018130027684 for a new Remote Tasting Room Liquor License application for Granite Mountain Distillery LLC, location 125 North Cortez Street.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda, item 10A.
Discussion and consideration and possible action regarding a petition received by the council at the January 28, 2025 voting meeting and submitted by Ralph Hess. Who do you want to?
City Attorney?
Yeah, I don't think we have any presentation. You see in your agenda memo, the kind of the background here, this was the present, or a petition submitted by Ralph Hess. This would change our code. It'd be inconsistent with state law, but as mentioned in there, this is an area of state law that's pretty well spelled out, but doesn't by its terms declare that it's an area of statewide concern. So if it was an amendment to the charter, it'd probably, probably be legal. Staff has recommended denial of this petition, but leave it up to your discussion. And I'm assuming Mr. Hess will present as well.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I just would like to make several comments. You know, we've been going through our general plan draft review, and after the charter committee was done with their part, the general plan, there were two more changes made to it that were, I think, very pro-growth that caused, make changes in the major amendment criteria increased from, no, it was decreased from 40 acres to trigger a major, no, it was, I'm sorry, I have it wrong. Went from 20 acres now. Will not trigger a major amendment anymore. It has, it's 40 acres, so it was developed, it was doubled. And then also, there was a change to increase density. And the low-density zoning was, was removed. And this was done after the city charter was done by the, finished with the committee. So I just wanted to clarify that from Mr. Hess, if maybe this was something he was concerned about, and that's what triggered his petition. Thank you.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Yeah, I was just, I saw two general plan commissioners over there shaking their heads during part of that, so, and I'm curious if there's some dispute on some of those numbers. I'd like to hear from you folks, too.
I also have a blue card with Sarah. Do you want me to talk about everything I was going to?
I'm just curious what, it sounded like there was maybe some.
Yeah, there is, that 40 acres was part of the old, the current criteria for a major plan amendment that was passed in 2002. So we've been living under that for 23 years now. And there are actually three thresholds, 40 acres, 160 acres, and 640 acres, depending on how many homes are located within a quarter mile of the proposed project. And the committee found that, well, first of all, in 23 years, it's never triggered a major amendment to the general plan because it was very, very pro-growth back in 2002. And what we worked on was to find a compromise between, you know, the pendulum has slammed all the way over to pro-growth, and it basically was a free-for-all. There, there was no restrictions. And, and there were some people, such as Ralph, that would like to have this pendulum swing all the way to the other side and have everything restricted as possible and as enforceable as possible. So we came up with a compromise, and there are actually two trigger levels of 10 acres and 20 acres. And the way we have it now, the proposed general plan for 2025, is it is very likely, I think, that future projects will trigger major plan amendments. And then when that happens, under state law, it goes through the normal planning and zoning process with public comment, and then it comes to the city council with 60-day comment, and then a two-thirds majority of vote of the city council to approve it. So it would require a vote of five out of the seven members of the council to approve a major plan amendment. If it, if, because we anticipate that there will be multiple times when the major plan amendment threshold does get triggered under this new general plan, if they, if it were to have to go to a vote of the public every time, it would basically just bring economic development in Prescott to a screeching halt. It would paralyze it. Because a 10-acre project is not very big. If you want to build a supermarket with a parking lot on the north end of town where all the growth is going to be, it's likely going to trigger a major plan amendment.
Okay, thank you.
So it's 20, it's 10 acres and 20 acres to trigger, not 40 acres.
So is that 10 acres, is that a minor? Is that the minor plan amendment?
No, they're both major.
They're both major.
I've got the chart right here. So for example, when we bring, when we annex new property into the city, and it's going to be happening on the north end of town, it'll be coming in as low-medium density. If it goes from, and that's going to be one to seven dwelling units per acre. If it goes from low-medium density to medium-high density, it would be, to, to, that's not a big change in the zoning, so it would trigger at 20 acres. But if you go from low-medium density to mixed use, then it would trigger at 10 acres. It would also trigger at 10 acres for commercial, and it would trigger at 10 acres for commercial/employment. So it's more likely to trigger, more opportunities to trigger at 10 acres than 20 acres.
So you don't think that that change will accelerate growth?
Oh, no, not at all. This, what we tried to do, and in Ralph's petition, he mentions that back in 2023, the committee voted nine to one to recommend to the charter committee that major plan amendments go to a vote of the people. Well, that's when we were working under the present definition of a major plan amendment, which is 40, 160, or 640-acre projects, which was never triggered. Under this plan, it will definitely trigger it, and we tried to find, I think we tried to find a good compromise between being way too unrestrictive and being way too restrictive. So I think, you know, there are, there are things that, that the committee did not agree on, and there are going to be things that the council's not going to agree on in the proposed general plan. But one thing the committee pretty much agreed on was the compromise that we came in with the, what triggers a, a major amendment. And I think we found a good balance with the help of city staff, because they did the research on it. And they went and looked at how many projects would have hit the major plan amendment under different criteria. And, and they came up with this recommendation of 10 and 20 acres, which is a really good balance between restrict, too restrictive or too lax.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay.
Councilman Montoya.
I had a follow-up question for Terry. Did you guys have a vote on, on that? Or did it just kind of get incorporated into what?
We did vote on that. I can't remember which, which meeting it was.
Do you remember the outcome?
Yes, it was in favor of what we have now.
And do you know the numbers, though? Like, was it, I'm guessing if Ralph is here with a petition, it wasn't unanimous.
I don't know. Tammy or Chelsea might know what those numbers are.
I was curious, but.
But it was, it was heavily in favor of what is, what we are proposing.
Last question about this follow-up in that same. Did you guys discuss this at length? It wasn't like, this just.
Oh, oh, my God. I have a visual aid here. These are all the agenda packets for the committee. And Ralph's original proposal was way back here. And he originally proposed that any change whatsoever to the general plan would have to go to a vote of the public. And since then, we have all this printed on both sides where we discussed time and time and time and time and time again, meeting after meeting after meeting, what should constitute a minor change? What should constitute a major change? What should happen when a major change is triggered? And we, we spent many, many, many hours and many meetings discussing this. And I think the, the committee really came up with an excellent solution. This is one of the things that I'm most happy about, not from an ideological perspective of pro-growth or anti-growth, but from the perspective that it's balanced.
I appreciate that, thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
And if I may. Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I just wanted to thank Mr. Sappio for correcting my wrong impression that I had.
That's okay.
And I didn't mean to sell you guys short because I know how hard you worked these last two years.
Oh, it's, no problem whatsoever. And, and the thing is, is with so much information, it's easy to, to be, you know, for confusion to happen. And it's been very interesting to watch the evolution of the committee. Because early on, we all felt that the development had been under, you know, it was a free-for-all for development, and it needed to be reined in. And then as we learned more and learned more and learned more, education's a wonderful thing, and you have all these people giving you information. And what evolved from that was, I think, a very reasonable solution.
Thank you. City Attorney, you had some comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The, the petition by Mr. Hess wouldn't change what triggers the major plan amendment. It only, it only changes how a major plan amendment is treated. Instead of the supermajority by council, it would go to the voters. And I will say, and I need to say that this was recommended to go to the Charter Review Committee back in 2022. But shortly thereafter, as the committee was kind of dealing with other things, then the committee was dissolved. So they didn't take up this.
Actually, they had a whole year and a half to work on this.
No, they didn't, Terry.
Oh, they didn't?
They didn't.
It was never brought to the charter.
Ralph was on the Charter Committee?
I know, but it was never an agendized item.
All right.
Right.
Okay.
So do we have any other public comment?
All right.
We do. Ralph?
Yeah, I'm Ralph Hess. I live here in Prescott. I brought this to the council's attention because it appeared that it was not going to come to the council any other way. From the Prescott 2025 General Plan Review Committee's inception, its members stated their desire to address concerns expressed not only by Prescott citizens, but by elected officials alike, that the city's previous general plans lacked enforceability. That lack of enforceability prevented, or prevented circumvention of the guiding principles of city staff, committee appointees, and elected officials. As Mr. Sappio has pointed out during its March 29, 2023 meeting, Prescott's General Plan Review Committee recommended by a vote of nine to one. And by the way, Councilman Ted Gamboji voted among the nine, as did our current chair, Terry Sappio. Both voted and prove of that, proved of that, along with me. Referring to the Charter Review Commission to be considered a charter amendment that requires any major amendments to the general plan be presented to the voters for ratification. And as you've discussed, that committee no longer meets. I did submit the proposed language that I included in my petition to the committee, but as Ms. Saip has indicated, it was never, ever agendized. It was part of a group of proposed amendments that I included and presented to the committee as we were requested to do. Therefore, I'm bringing this petition directly to you. It sounds to me, from what I'm hearing, is there might, first of all, there was no concern of mine that that needed to be done because of what the 2015 plan, major plan amendment criteria was. And at that time, I thought the rationale was, if Prescott voters are required to ratify Prescott's general plans, they should also be required to ratify major amendments to those plans, general plans, notwithstanding the state statute. And because this is a charter city, we could decide as a charter city how we wanted to have general, major plan amendments determined and ratified by voters. From what I'm hearing today, there's a suggestion that perhaps the nine voted at that meeting on March 29, 2023, that, hey, since we've never had a major plan amendment, why don't we go ahead and vote that we submit it to the voters because it'll never go to the voters? I'm cynical by nature and by career, but I don't expect that the committee members voted in that, for that purpose, to think, just because they thought it would never, ever go to the voters. Let me address staff's recommendation to reject this petition. I know which staff are doing, are recommending rejecting it. But I'll just tell you, in my experience, both with the Charter Review Committee and, and as a matter of fact, when I had a discussion with your city manager, I've never heard staff ever be in support of taking anything to the voters, ever. And I can understand that in some respects because if staff comes forth with a recommendation, they only have to convince, and it doesn't go to the voters, they only have to convince four, five, or six of you if it's a simple majority or supermajority, simple majority or a supermajority. But if it goes to the voters, and they have an idea that might be unpopular, they're going to have to convince a majority of the voters. I understand that. Because I've never heard them ever support anything going to the voters.
Councilman Gamboji, do you have a question for Mr. Hess?
No, I'll wait till everyone's talked.
Councilmember Rusing.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Hess, do you have a, like, an example of a major plan amendment that should go to the voters? Because I'm afraid, you know, we won't be able to do a thing without anything going to, everything going to the voters, and we certainly don't want to micromanage everything. But if you had a theoretical example of something that needed to go to the voters, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Sappio has already told you about the table. The table sets forth the criteria for major plan amendments. Okay, so let's say someone wanted to take a development or a piece of property that's designated as low to medium density, and they wanted to go to medium or high density, and it was 20 acres or more. That would have to go to the voters. If, let's see, mixed use. If a piece of property was designated as mixed use, and they wanted to, or the property owner wanted to have it designated commercial, it would, if it was more than 10 acres, 10 acres or more, it would go to be a major, major plan amendment. It goes back to the rationale, and I don't know that this was the rationale of everyone that was on the committee, but I know that when it was presented, when this discussion took place, my rationale was that if the voters are required to approve the general plan, and you're going to make a major amendment to that general plan, the voters should be the ones who ratify that major plan amendment.
So Ralph, theoretically, if, if in our growth area to the north, if somebody wanted to put in a shopping center, that might have to go to the voters?
I have no idea, because I don't know what it would be currently designated and what the details would be with regard to the property.
Yeah, so like a major economic development project, like something that would generate sales tax would have to go to the voters?
Again, I have no idea. It depends, depends on what the property, how the property is designated. And I mean, we're going to be talking about this probably on your agenda item 10D.
Okay.
So, but, so it depends on how, what the details are and what the designation is. My, those, those types of issues should be determined by planning criteria.
Okay.
Hey, Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, not for Ralph, but for the Community Development Department. And I don't know, feel free to phone a friend on this, Chelsea, if you need to. But, so I heard Terry Sappio talk about the idea that the supermarket theory of a, of a major potential plan amendment. And I heard that we lowered the threshold for major plan amendments so that staff certainly expects that we will see, going from having seen none in, in the history of the city, it sounds like, or the very, very recent history of the city, it sounds like we're going to start experiencing them. Do we have an idea or a ballpark notion of how often? Because if it's, if it's every shopping center that's going in North Prescott, are we going to hold, hold a special election six or seven times for every major plan amendment? Like, six or seven times a year? That, that seems unwieldy to me.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Montoya, Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director. It's hard to know. It depends on the market, it depends on what projects come in. But I can tell you that developing the table, staff assessed the areas in the overall Prescott map that really depicted areas of large growth and where that growth can happen. There aren't a lot of large, large parcels like that. Shopping centers could go on potentially smaller acres. But yeah, if we got a good opportunity out North Prescott, and it, it triggered something, that would be, I, I can't tell you how much time or how much, how many projects would come in.
Yeah, and that's fair. I guess my bigger concern is, if we do this and we put it to the voters, and I'm a prospective, like, person doing economic development, and I'm looking at doing it in Prescott Valley, or I'm looking at doing it in Prescott, and I realize that to get my project done, I have to go to the voters, that seems like we're just basically stopping all economic development in our community, which seems, frankly, and no offense, Ralph, incredibly reckless. So I am, there's no way I'm in support of this.
Councilman Gamboji, do you want to make your comment now?
Okay. Norman Vincent Peale once said, "Plan your work and work your plan." In my world, a plan is marching orders. My experience with the general plan is that it's, it's a misnomer. It's required by the state. It has no legal enforceability. When you proposed making it, putting more teeth into the plan, I, I. When you proposed making it, putting more teeth into the plan, I agree with that because a plan is a plan. But I think we, we need to come to the realization that the general plan is misnamed. First of all, credit the city of Prescott. Other cities go out and get a consultant, they go around, check the box, mail it into Phoenix, we're done. Prescott works, and we put it together ourselves. So it's like building a house. You're doing the carpentry work, the electrical work, the plumbing work. And as a result of that, we invite a broad range of residents for input, many with disparate views. And, and my comments just don't apply to you, it applies to the rest of the discussion we're going to have on the general plan. Since it's not legally binding, and it includes a lot of disparate views, and then we have to go out to the voter to change a, a major portion of the general plan, in, when we had our first general plan meeting, the mayor asked the question, "Has anybody read the general plan?" I was one of the people to put my hand up for the 2015 general plan. Now, I may be having a Joe Biden moment, but I can't remember anything in the 2015 general plan that got implemented, but I can cite two proposals from the general plan that didn't get implemented. So I think we're making a lot to do about something that's really small. I think the state says we have to have a general plan, and as, as I tend to say, 11 people, really smart people, actually, it's more because sometimes you roll people off. I caught, caught grief from residents about saying about 11 smart, really smart people, but I still think they're smart. I think they worked for all this time to put together a general plan. It's a good general plan, it includes a lot of diverse thoughts and processes. Like you, to me, if it's a plan, it ought to be, it'd be a plan you work in, you ought to have some teeth in it, but we can't put any teeth in it. So I'd say we're doing, we're arguing again about something that's really not going to make a difference. And I'd say, "You've done good work." The rest of the, and there's other members of the, JD's here, and I think Jim's here, and Tom's here. I mean, a lot of people have done a lot of great work on this general plan. Let's not argue over it, let's get it approved.
If I can just address a couple of those comments.
Well, I'm going to tell you, sorry, Ralph, your time is up. I'm going to move to deny this petition.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Very good. We'll move on to item 10B.
Public hearing for the alternative expenditure limitation home rule ballot proposition.
Thank you, Sarah. Mark Woodfield, Budget and Finance Director. As council will remember, back in 1980, a statewide voter initiative imposed an expenditure limit on all cities and counties. This set the base year as fiscal year 1980 spending, then that would be incremented for population and CPI as you move forward. The proposition also allowed for cities to request home rule or a permanent base adjustment. Under home rule, the expenditure limit is set each year as part of the budget process. So that allows local councils and the public to establish the limit to meet the service needs that they want in their community. It's all done through public hearings and all as part of our budget process. The statewide limit has a lot of problems. It's based on a 45-year-old budget. Service levels in the community change over 45 years, not to mention CPI is a relatively poor factor to increment construction of water lines and sewer plants and things like that. The city of Prescott was able to live under the expenditure limit until 89, when we did our first request for home rule. The home rule election is only allowed for four years, so every four years, we have to go back. So this is the 10th time that I've stood up here, bringing you the expenditure limit, if you think you're tired of it. But anyway, as part of that, we have an information pack. We included detail in the, it's a draft version. That information pack has to be approved by the Auditor General before it can go to election. But we did have a draft in there for comments so that we can change them. Today is just a public hearing, the first of two. After the following public hearing, hopefully, we'll have a publicity pamphlet that the council is happy with that we can move forward. I have up on the screen the summary of the publicity pamphlet, and I have a table at the end of my slides that summarizes all these numbers, so we'll just go through a few of these real quick. As part of the detailed analysis, we put together a complete grid of the four years that we're requesting the, the home rule option and the estimated spending. Now, this is estimated spending. We do this based on the 2005 adopted budget, as well as the five-year plan the council and the public all saw as part of that budget process. We increment it forward with a 3% cost of, or CPI for the operating expenses, and then we take a look at the actual capital expenditures and put it out there. And this, this summary has also been increased for the Prop 478 numbers for police and fire and capital. And as you can see, we have to show availability of revenues to show that we can achieve this. Some years, you'll see high spikes in the airport or even in public safety, and they're offset by debt issues, which are exempt from the limit, and also grants, which are exempt from the limit, and other things. So with that, are there any questions at this point before we move to the next slide?
Can you explain that extreme increase in budget proposal for fiscal year 30 for the library?
This, again, these are estimates, not really a proposed budget, just to clarify. And what that was, was during the discussions last year during the budget workshop, this came up, Councilwoman Furrworth. It was discussion about the branch library, and at that meeting, it was in '27, I believe, and it was pushed out as a result of that discussion. In talking with the councilwoman, the things that were pushed out beyond 2029 were rolled into 2030 because they weren't in a specific year, but I think council's desire is that that would actually be out further than that, if at all. So in discussing this, we think we should move that branch library out of those numbers. It does not have an effect on the net expenditure limit, because the, the funding of that is from grants and from donations, which are exempt from the limit, but it would be probably a truer representation of what 2030 will look like.
Understood, thank you. Any other questions or concerns from council? Okay. Councilwoman Furrworth.
Thank you.
Actually, y'all can call me that from now on. I do believe the discussion we had this morning was that I had asked to push that out of the five-year plan while we're a year earlier, so it's falling back in by, by accident. And I would prefer, for purposes of the home rule, that we push that out of anything that's going to end up going to the voters in this package that we'll approve in a few weeks. So I would like to remove, you said it was about 15 to 16?
It's about, yeah, it's 15 and something. We'll move it out, yeah.
Move it out one more year if, if the rest of the council is amenable to that.
And again, yeah, the, kind of the point was, it was, it was deferred beyond the five-year capital plan, but the five-year capital plan ended in '29 for the year, so that's how it ended up in '30. So it is probably a longer-term project, if at all.
I was able to confirm this morning some of the other, I was just looking at the big numbers and confirmed that the police and fire 478 was all in there and that, and that the, the other one we were discussing was.
Airport.
The airport. And that out there in '29 and '30 is the potential of the extension and strengthening of the runway, which I do think is worth having in there. Whether it falls that year when we get done with the budget will.
Exactly.
Tell. But I think it's worth putting it out there because it is our intention, I believe, to, to move in that direction, to save our economic development driver of the airport. So, so that one for me was, I agreed with, but the other one, the library, was my question because we've never had that alignment that we were pursuing a branch, so.
And then, if I could, just my last slide here, Mayor. This is just kind of a recap. The state imposed limit, if it didn't vote, is there in the column next to the fiscal year, about 80 to 90 million a year. We have exclusions under the law. Things that are excluded are like debt issues. So if you, if you don't have room under your limit, you can borrow money, because that's excluded, and repayment of that debts, debt is excluded as well. So there are a lot of exclusions, as you can see, from the large number we have there, as well as grants, as well as donations. But other than that, there aren't exclusions for availability of revenue. For instance, we just passed 47, 478, and without home rule, we would not be able to do anything that we promised under that. We would actually, if you look all the way to the far column, we would actually have to cut almost 100 million out of our budget every year, which would definitely impact service levels and being able to provide the necessary utility infrastructure. So again, with that, this goes to the voters on the August 5, hopefully, election, and if passed, it would give you home rule through 2030.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I would just like to comment that if we didn't do this every four years, we'd basically go back, turn back the hands of time to 1980, and we'd have to be under a 1980-year budget.
And again, it is adjusted for CPI and population, but it doesn't, it doesn't contemplate the difference in providing water utilities from the 80s. And again, I was here in the 80s and.
Yeah, so this is.
It flowed out of Goldwater and it went into the pipes.
So this was, well, the voters were well-meaning, they were trying to cap inflation, and this passed, and now we're dealing with it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Furrworth, you had another comment?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. So while we're here, and this slide demonstrates the very last column, is if we didn't get home rule to pass, the numbers vary up and down, but, you know, it's, it's around, on average, around a $99,000 or $100,000 hit to our expenditure limit, which would devastate not only public safety, but library, and probably everything else would be devastated. And so as I was looking at the ballot format proposal, and given the learning we had with 478 about making things crystal clear to voters so they know what they're voting on, my concern with either the descriptive title or what the implications of a no vote is, is very statuesque and technical. It doesn't help people see that it's going to be about a $99,000 hit to services we're extending to the citizens. So that was my question this morning for, for leadership over there to mull around and see if their reaction was to, you know, page 113 in the package here about the ballot.
And again, I guess I would just, just real quickly, before Joe weighs in on it, I'd reiterate that that information is available in the publicity pamphlet, but as you pointed out, not everybody reads the publicity pamphlet. We also have a Q and A, a one-page Q and A that points that, also that issue out. And the ballot language that we put in there is from the League of Arizona Cities, which is from their lawyers, which is what's been used by the other 80 cities in the state that have home rule and us for the last, for our nine elections. And with that, I'd turn it over to Joe.
Thanks, Mark. You did bring this up, and I've been mulling over, it's, and I think legally, we can add more than we currently have. That's the short answer. The longer answer is it does have to be neutral, and it does have to be factual, and there is some reluctance. I have some reluctance, and I'm guessing Mark does, and I think that's why he brought up the league language, which is, the league has established this language and everybody uses it, and I think it's, then becomes established as, hey, this is the neutral language. And deviations from that neutral language, I think, will be frowned upon by any outside court or reviewing agency. And we do have to provide this to the Auditor General to review. So I, without spending more time on it, because I spent, you know, an hour, I do have reluctance on kind of recommending that we deviate from the standard language.
Very good. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, Mayor.
Very good. Then in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote.
And thank you, and we will bring back those changes in publicity pamphlet when the next meeting.
I agree. All right, we'll move on to item 10C.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-1913, updating the city's pension funding policy.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and Council, Mark Woodfield, Budget and Finance Director, for those of you who don't know me. This is an item that we have to do each year in, at some level. This year, we discussed at the mid-year budget retreat about adding some wording relating to how to address ongoing shortfalls in the pension trust funds. So on the screen, I have, I don't know why it says no title, I have highlighted in green, which isn't really coming across, it's coming across as gray, the changes in this section, the, the funding section, we have to update it for our new pension liability each year. That's a state law requirement, because the state of Arizona decided all cities must have a pension funding policy that acknowledges the liability. The state doesn't have one, but we're required to have one. Kind of interesting. So those are changes. And then the other change we discussed was the last bullet point in the actions that council has taken to achieve the funding goal. And I did modify this from the language we looked at at the mid-year to specifically exclude the public safety tax initiative, Prop 478. And I also made it clear that it was any unencumbered operating surplus in the general fund, as opposed to grant funds and other type of funds the PD has that would be problematic to try to use. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. This is something we do each year, and it's also part of our budget book and how we formulate our, our funding of these trusts.
Councilwoman Furrworth.
Thank you. I appreciate you following up and giving us kind of what the picture looked like for the last few years, which, which was a request.
I also have that here.
Oh, okay. So, so to have that was, you know, important to see, and, and so I am, I'm aligned to this. My question this morning relates to the goal that is in the pension funding policy, which says we're going to hit 100% by June 30 of '26. And, and so your thoughts on whether that's actually going to happen on both police and fire, but also your thoughts about moving forward, once we get past this one time, given all the, it's even a harder word to say than Furrworth, actuarial, fluctuations and assumptions that happen? You know, for me, to maintain it at 100% going forward seems like we're just setting ourselves up for a future red on our scorecards. So that was my question to you this morning, was also, could we think about a 99% plus? Because we don't want to go back to where we were, but, but I don't know that after this coming fiscal year, 100%, we're not in control of all the drivers. And so that's my concern as a policy state. And so that's my concern as a policy statement that we unbind the goal in the future.
And yes, Councilwoman Lois, actuarial is not a hard word, not like.
Neither is Furworth in my family.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a goal. Um, and as I told you, I think we can achieve that goal. I think the city of Prescott can achieve that goal. Does that mean that every actuarial will be at 100%? No. Like you said, there's factors out of our control. Um, there's changes, but if you have a half a million dollar deficit in the actuary that comes out and you take care of it that next year with an operating surplus, I think you've achieved that goal. But that all said, that's my opinion and I'm not a council and this is a council policy. So if council wants it to be 99 plus percent or at least 99 or at least 50% or whatever percentage you want to throw at it, um, that's totally something you can do as part of adopting this policy.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Mark, I just need to make it perfectly clear to the public that no Prop 478 funds will be going towards paying off the ARC, right?
Well, yes, definitely not for this to pay down any unfunded liability above the regular ARC. There are employees in Prop 478 monies and ARC for those employees will be, will be paid out of Prop 478.
Okay.
But yeah, not the surplus. That's why we excluded it specifically in the wording. And again, if council's uncomfortable, we can change that wording as well.
Well, quite frankly, in my opinion, I think this is a very creative way to maintain full funding in our pension system. Uh, every year we're going to have resignations unexpected. We may have lateral transfers out. Uh, there's maybe some lateral transfers in that would be a level two, um, officer or a firefighter that might have an impact on our funding. And I still think that the expected long-term rate of return that the funding PSPRS team expects to achieve is a little, a little too high. Almost every amount of research I've done indicated that if you take a well-balanced portfolio that's well-managed over the long run, you can achieve pretty reliably around six and a half, maybe a 6.8% return without too much risk. But obviously in the past, the, um, investment team has spent way too much money hiring quote unquote, uh, stock mark, stock market investment professionals and paid them hundreds of millions of dollars rather than making their own decisions. So as long as they maintain that 7.2%, I think we'll probably always have a little bit of unfunded liability. So if we have budgeted, uh, police and fire budgets and we end up losing a firefighter or a police officer, then the budget amount to pay for that officer then becomes a potential surplus at the end of the year that could be applied to the unfunded ratio. So I think that's a, and then we could just always, and I think this proposal here indicates that we'd never go above 100. If we hit the 100%, then no future or current surplus would be applied to that.
Correct. That's the way it is written. And, yeah, I mean, of course, that would be intent. There's no reason to.
And one of the reasons why we generated this, uh, what was called a growing ratio is because we gave our police officers a, a rather unexpectedly large increase in their salary and benefits. Uh, when I talked to PSPRS, they said they, um, annually project about a 2.3% increase in benefits and salary. So that one year, when we, I think we gave the police department five and a half. More? What'd she say?
She said all city employees got that, not just the police and fire.
Yeah. Right. So that caused the increase in that particular year. And then you have to realize that they do a smoothing process. They take the, uh, performance results over the last seven years and average them out. So even though last year they had a pretty good year, they did 10.2% on their investment portfolio, but we didn't see 10.2% in our account because they smoothed it out, out over the previous six years to come up with an average.
Yeah, Mayor, absolutely right. And again, um, as we discussed at that other meeting, the, the smoothing is done for the actuarial report. Um, the account, our account still earned the 10.5 is still put into our account. They, they don't distribute interest on that rate. They just use it in the smoothing, but just for the public.
With their actuarial estimate of where you are.
Yeah.
They take that smoothing into effect.
Absolutely.
So even though our, our account, uh, did achieve that 10.2%.
Yeah.
When we look at the results for the actuarial year end, it, it has been smoothed out. So that's, I mean, that's, that's a good thing, I think, for most, uh, most cities and, and other agencies that have their own account, because otherwise, when you have a real bad year.
Yeah.
You could be, uh, panicking and trying to find money to throw at it. And then when you have a really good year, you cut back and then, um, you end up with a long-term volatility in your own account, which you'd probably rather not have.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, um, Mark, would you bring us up to date about the hot shot funding? Um, I'm kind of unclear what happens to it, um, going forward.
We have.
Spires.
Right. And just to clarify, we received a couple of different payments to cover the hot shot loss because again, our hot shots, um, the, the loss was on a state fire. We received a couple contributions and then when we tried to get a fully meaningful contribution of the full actuarial cost of those losses, um, we got a, a million dollars a year for seven years. And we've received, um, six of those. We've received, the actuarial report only reflects, um, five because we receive them in July and we've received the one in July of 24. And then we have our last one, I believe, in July of 25, which is in the next budget year.
And what will the impact be once that expires on our budget?
We'll stop getting them.
No, I mean, we have to make it up.
No. I mean, the, the, the point of that impact was to pay the amount needed in the trust to cover those, um, line of duty death vests.
All righty. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
All right. Any other comments or concerns? Any, any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2025 dash 1913.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right. We'll move on to item 10D.
Presentation, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the updated vision and mission statements for the city of Prescott.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, we started working on a new vision statement and a new mission statement at our meeting in December. Um, those gone through a little bit of, of process. So we aggregated the vision, um, thoughts at that time. Council has since sent me any other thoughts that they've had and we've come up with, um, a vision statement. The mission statement process was similar, uh, but included a survey of, of staff. 161 staff participated and selected this statement over, uh, three other options. Uh, the vision statement, if approved today, would be that Prescott is a thriving and scenic community in the heart of Arizona, rooted in Western heritage and strong hometown values, where families and businesses enjoy outdoor adventures, vibrant cultural events, a prosperous economy and the promise of a bold tomorrow. And this is a, an aspirational statement. Uh, if you think about the mission and vision as like a road trip, the vision statement is the, the destination. It's where we're headed, the best version of ourselves. Uh, the mission statement explains our role as the city in reaching that vision statement. Uh, the mission statement would read, "We enhance quality of life as stewards of our natural and built environment and through outstanding city services that engage our community, preserve our past and ensure a safe and vibrant future." Happy to make any, uh, further revisions or answer any questions, but that's all I have to present today.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you, Dailin, for doing this. I would just like to read for the public what our previous vision statement was, "To be the premier community in the Southwest," which to me sounded like a pitch for a retirement community in Sun City. So thank you for crafting this. I support it 100%.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too love this. Um, I think it's aspirational and exciting. And the only thing is I was looking at it this weekend. Um, some of us are not lucky enough maybe to be in a family or in a business. And I wanted everyone in the community to feel like they were in here. So I don't know if the right word is where individuals or where people, comma, families and businesses, so that, so that everybody is in this statement. Um, and so that was the only potential amendment. Other than that, I loved all the words and I love the bold promise for tomorrow. So thank you.
And that's an easy edit. Um, to add, um, that phrase would just say where individuals, families and businesses enjoy the rest of the statement.
Well, I don't have an objection to that.
Yeah.
Any other comments or concerns? So are we all okay of adding individual to the vision statement where it says families and businesses?
Yes.
We're going to write, put in individuals or people?
Same thing.
I would suggest individuals because people are in families too. I guess individuals are as well, but.
An individual family.
Maybe it just sounds good to me. So it's, it's up to you on what you think sounds good.
So it's okay if an individual self-identifies as a family? May I make a motion?
Yeah.
Please do.
It would include our visitors too, because they're very.
I move to approve the updated vision and mission statement with the inclusion of the word individual.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
10E, please.
GPA 22 dash 001, discussion, review and approval regarding the updated City of Prescott 2025 general plan, applicant, City of Prescott, Community Development Department.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner. So this is our second meeting in front of the city council, bringing you the updated, uh, 2025 general plan. So we're going to go through a lot of information today and we're going to ask you to make some decisions today to give staff direction, um, moving forward. But we want to start off to, uh, this is our discussion format that we're going to do. So I'll present some information and updates. Um, council can discuss and ask questions. We may ask for public comment, um, staff to present recommendations for consensus or action, further, further, uh, council discussion and a possible action or direction from council. So that's kind of the format as, um, and we'll, you'll see, get a rhythm of it as we go forward. But we want to start, start off, start off, um, as you, like saw with the charter amendment proposal, you know, the enforceability of a general plan, it's a vision. It's not law. You don't adopt it. Anything that's in the general plan doesn't automatically get implemented or adopted. Um, it doesn't change anybody's zoning or entitlement rights. It's a vision for the next 10 years of how we see ourselves growing. The state implemented this in 1998 and then amended it in 2000 because of all the growth that was happening, the unmanaged growth that was happening in Arizona. So they want to give the, um, will require the communities to create a plan of how they see themselves growing. The Growing Smarter legislation before, um, reform the general and comprehensive planning process in three key ways. It increased the required level of public participation in the development, approval and amendment of the general plan. Now, the last two general plans, uh, committee, committee met, met in the basement of Old City Hall, very little public participated. Um, it wasn't broadcasted on TV. It wasn't on Facebook or rebroadcasted. Our, our last process over the last two years was in council chambers, open to the public, mass emailing is going out about every agenda item, and we had a lot of public participation. And we thank everybody that participated in that because that made it to what we have today. It increased the scope of general plan by requiring new growth-related elements and detailing aspects of those elements. The city of Prescott, our first general plan, I think was in 1998 before this. Um, so when they, then they had to revise it to include all the elements that were required by state statutes. But as a city of Prescott, we were already forward-thinking then and are already doing these type of plans. And then it strengthened the implementation power of the general plan by requiring that future rezonings, so major plan amendments are only triggered by a rezoning. If someone comes in and they want to develop the property under existing zoning, even though it's not in compliance with the general plan map, they have existing zoning entitlements that don't change unless they ask. Then we would look at the, um, the plant, the map and the general plan criteria and see if it should trigger a major plan amendment, which represents, um, an annual public hearing. So at the time when they wrote statutes, uh, major plan amendments were only heard once a year. So they usually have a deadline of June and they're all heard together. Well, they watered that down a couple of years ago. So it has to be, it can be heard any time of year. Um, but it also requires two-thirds approval of the governing body. And we'll get into this more when we get to the major plan amendment process. So there's been questions about, you know, the neighborhood plans. There's been some discussions. So the general plan is the overarching 30,000-foot view. Then you get down to your, like strategic plans and implementations, and then those get more of the boots on the ground. Then you have other plans that get down to the specific areas and they're very specific. General plans, general. Then the other plans, as you move down, get more specific. And our plan is to review all our neighborhood plans and other plans after this, um, to see what needs to be updated and what other processes we need to create for neighborhood plans and such, because we know they're all very old and, uh, may not be valid or need to be updated. But that's a after this. And then also, you know, part of the general plan, um, it is a very big document, I understand, but, um, once it's approved by a city council, then we're going to create an executive summary or like a Cliff Notes version of it. So when you go to the website, when all this is done, one day, um, you'll have the executive summary. Then you have the land use map. Then you have the general plan. Then you'll have the implementation table. So someone, if they just want to take a brief look at what's in the general plan, they can. But then you also have access to the map and such on the website and not have to pull up the big general plan. So what state statutes did do is that what, the land, what was required, um, in a general plan, they call them elements. So this, like I said before, last time we talked, the, the state statute says what you have to have in a plan, but not how you present it. You just got to make sure you have all these, the information required under all these elements in your plan. So we have land use, circulation, or also called transportation, open space, open space, ooh, I can't talk tonight, growth areas, environmental planning, cost of development and water resources. So that's for any general plan, no matter what your population. Once we hit 50,000, which we're not there yet, um, then you add conservation and recreation, uh, more extensive transit plan and bicycle routes, public services and buildings, which is, uh, fire, police, your library, your, uh, community center. Then housing, conservation, safety, safety is our evacuation routes and site. Then housing, conservation, safety, safety is our evacuation routes and seismic areas and things like that. Energy, the neighborhood preservation and revitalization. Now, in the 2015 plan, we had three voluntary elements. We had economic development, tourism and healthcare. And then, and then the proposed plan, we have dark sky community in Tree City, USA. Those were added because in 2023, we put out a survey to the citizens to answer some questions. And one of them was like, do we, right now, we have dark sky requirements for commercial, multifamily and industrial, but not for single-family residential. So, we asked, would you like us to extend our requirements to single-family for, to try to become a dark sky community? And we got about 80% saying yes, they were supportive of that. And then with Tree City, USA was bringing up becoming a Tree City, USA designation, and we had overwhelming support for that too. Then we had climate-added, digital connectivity, youth programs and art culture events and museums. So, we're gonna start with the introduction, because that's the beginning. So, one of the big topics that came out during the 60-day public comment period was a paragraph in the introduction, the non-discrimination language. So, it currently reads, oh, boy. "The City of Prescott is a city that values equality of life for all its inhabitants. Prescott is home to people of varying backgrounds, cultures and perspectives. This cultural diversity keeps the city vibrant and is an asset we should all embrace. The city hopes that all people within the limits feels welcome. As such, the city does not condone discrimination or harassment of individuals based on identifying characteristics such as race, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender expression or identity, religious practice, spiritual practice, age and mental physical ability." So, the Martin Luther King Group came to the general plan committee and asked about a paragraph being added, you know, similar to this. They proposed some language. It was tweaked a couple of times by the general plan committee. They did not take this lightly. There was very allotted discussion about this. And this is what came out of that. And we understand that, you know, there's been a lot of comment and US Council have talked to a lot of people who have concerns with this. So, in your email back either this morning or last night, there was a proposed change to the last, the end of this paragraph, excuse me, to read, "As such, it is intended that people of all ages, races, national origins, sexual orientations, genders, religions and disabilities can make use of Prescott's land and amenities without facing discrimination or harassment. This goal is consistent with the plan section Prescott's vision, which includes the ethic of equality and respect for all community members." So, that was sent to you. We were asked to bring this language forward for you to discuss. So, we have four potential items for you to vote today or give us direction. One, approve, approve to leave the language as is. Two, approve to revise the language as proposed or another suggestion discussed. Approve to revise as proposed or with other language discussed and move to maybe another section of the plan, so it's not in the introduction, like community quality. That might be a better place in the plan for this type of language. And then, or move to remove the language from the plan. So, I'll stop there and let you provide, have a discussion and provide staff input.
Councilwoman Gamboge.
Tammy, could you go back to that, you know, what's the difference between two and three?
Two is leaving it in the introduction where it is now, or three would be move it to the more back in the plan where we discuss community quality. It was suggested that maybe that might be a better location for this type of language in the plan rather than in the introduction. So, that was just something that was brought to staffs as a recommendation.
So, three would include the revised language?
If that's how you vote, yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to shout out to the MLK community for your latest proposal. I was gone this weekend and when I got caught up with email, I was absolutely delighted. And so, thank you very much for what you've done here. I do think, especially with our new Prescott vision statement that we just approved a few minutes ago, these two statements go hand in hand with each other. My only other thing that I wasn't sure about was in the package of the general plan on slide, in the introduction, and it's on the one that's behind the erroneous vision statement, which we're now gonna update. There's six little blocks and it says, the bottom right one says ethic of equality and respect for all community members, which the MLK community's statement made point of. So, I don't know if we're keeping all six of those points here. If it is and they're staying together, then this goes hand in glove. If we move it back with community quality, then I don't know, you know, what that's gonna do to making sure that everything flows well with each other. So, that's my only concern, but I'm very grateful for the revised statement.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Tammy, I know when I met with you and Chelsea last week, it was my suggestion that we move this statement to the quality of life because I felt that this topic was more of a quality of life issue. I really liked the revised language. I think it's consistent with Prescott's being everybody's hometown. That has been a slogan and a tagline for Prescott for many years. And my only suggestion is we adopt a new language and put it under quality of life. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. Discrimination is wrong and unacceptable, has no place here in Prescott. And I completely support including a non-discrimination clause in the general plan. And I definitely approve of the new language, which I guess is option number three.
Mayor Protem, can tell me?
Mayor, so Tammy, as a requirement to the elements that are contained in a general plan, is the non-discrimination language one of the elements that is required?
No.
Okay. And I do agree with Eric. I believe it has to be under the quality of life. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to weigh in on this issue, and I think this land use document should not have any reference to such non-discrimination clauses within this land use document. Not only that, but I want to reference Executive Order 14168 that was issued by President Trump on January 20th. And I'll quote from a number of sections of this executive order. "Federal employees acting in an official capacity on behalf of their agency shall use the term sex and not gender in all applicable federal policies and documents. Agencies shall remove all statements, policies, regulation forms, communication and other internal and external messages that promote or otherwise inculcate gender ideology. Each agency shall assess grant conditions and grantee preferences and ensure grant funds do not promote gender ideology." So, I consider any reference to gender violation of this executive order, and it also would put us at risk of losing any federal funding that we might be eligible for over the course of the, course of this general plan's tenure term. So, I think it's not only controversial, but it's unnecessary and it even risks future federal opportunities for funding of any nature. So, I would recommend it be removed.
I'd like to ask the lawyer for his opinion.
It's a difficult question, quite frankly, on whether it would apply to us in any way. By its, I would say, by the way it's worded, it doesn't apply to us. We're talking about federal usage. But there is the language that says federal funds shall not be used to promote gender ideology. And what does that mean? We don't know because it depends on enforcement. But there is that language that says each agency shall look at grantees and determine if any of the funds are being used to promote gender ideology. You know, from the perspective of this is executive order besides possibly impacting grants, doesn't have any weight on what we do. But the language that says gender, if it were changed to sex, for example, would then bring it into compliance with the executive order. But I've spent some time looking at this and whether this language here would impact us and impact our grants under the executive order. And I can't say it would, but it depends on enforcement, which we just don't know what that looks like at this point.
So, why do we risk it? That's my concern. Councilman Moore.
I personally have no problem using the word gender. I don't think that's a problem at all. I think we're mincing words and I have no problem with the statement being in the general plan. I think it says a lot about our community, says who we are and that we accept people and that we are everybody's hometown. I believe this statement belongs in our general plan and I'm willing to accept it as written. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusi.
You know, we bring up our FAA funding for the airport, which is, which is very critical. You know, we depend on the FAA funding. We don't want to jeopardize it, but I don't see any connection between funding the airport that will promote some, anything that will contraindicate the executive order.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand your concern. I agree with Councilwoman Ferworth's, Rusi's concern also about the, we just talked about it in our budget. We need, we need the funding for the airport. But gender ideology is different than the term genders, which is what I'm reading from the revised statement here. Genders, there's, for many people, there's two. For other people, there's more. But it doesn't say gender ideology. It just says genders. And if you believe there's two, then there's an S on the end of that word. So, I have no problem with the way this is captured and, or I could be open to sex. I don't, you know, but I do think this belongs in our plan. And I like the fact that they turned it into, the way they phrased this has turned it into that people deserve to be able to use the land and the amenities. So, it became a land use, non-discrimination proposal, and I like the way they've done it, so.
We may have people that want the public want to speak when you're done.
Do we want to take public comment?
It's up to you, Mayor. I don't know if you want to do it on each section or as a whole. I mean, the way that staff presented the discussion was that you guys were gonna discuss everything and then public comment would be taken, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I think we probably ought to finish reviewing the document, listen to the council's concerns about other sections, and then listen to public comment.
Are we done? Does anyone else have any comments or?
Councilwoman Ferworth, you have additional comments?
No, thank you, sorry.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I did. I just want to thank Lois for her comments. I really appreciate her expression that this isn't addressing gender ideology, it's just expressing genders. If you were to look at any federal housing policy, and this is a land use document, and there's a lot, you know, if you look at HUD guidelines, it talks about non-discrimination. In federal guidelines, sex, gender, religion, whatever, it's already in the guidelines. And this is a land use document and it's about housing, and so, it's very appropriate that this statement is in this document.
Keep in mind that those guidelines have changed. Based upon this executive order, it's very clear, "Federal employees acting in an official capacity on behalf of their agency shall use the term sex and not gender in all applicable federal policies and documents."
That's fine for President Trump, but I personally think...
We happen to be in the United States.
Thank you. I realize that.
Our state and our town and our county.
I don't have to agree.
So, if you want to risk taking any federal funding for now and the next 10 years, then that's your opinion.
Absolutely.
I would rather keep our, our city eligible for the fundings that we need and think especially when we're considering the need for FAA funding for our airport.
I'm not worried about that.
That's why you're not running for reelection, huh?
Neither are you.
Right. Well, apparently I have a longer-term concern about the condition of our city. Let's move on.
Okay. So, Council, you just approved a new vision statement. So, our question to you is, would you like us to replace the vision statement that was, this was from the 2015 plan? If we are open to updating it to the new Prescott vision and your mission statement that you just approved or leaving this as is as a separate document? So, so this is a discussion, approve the vision statement as is, approve the vision statement to what was just approved today, or approve the vision statement and add mission statement both as approved today.
Councilman Gamboge.
Mr. Mayor, Tammy, I have a question, point of order. How many, we didn't vote on the previous statement. How many statements do we have to review here?
Probably about 10.
Oh, my gosh.
Do we really want to wait till we get 10? Because I probably forgot number one through six already.
Well, if you want to do them one at a time, we're gonna be here all night.
But we have this pretty special, but we're hoping it doesn't, hoping it doesn't, it could. But we're just trying to, for each chapter, get some consensus, so you're giving me direction on what the next step is. I just need direction on what our next step is and, but I'm maybe bringing back to you. So, we're asking, I'm asking for direction from you as council of, would you like us to update the vision statement to what was just approved?
This is easy.
I would propose that we give them direction as they go through each item.
Well, we'll be doing that, but not taking public comment on every one. Councilmember Rusi.
I support implementing the new vision statement, replacing the old vision statement. I think the community as a whole should just have one vision statement in all our documents, our strategic plan, our general plan and wherever else we need it.
Would you also like the mission statement also added or just the vision?
The mission also.
Okay.
Do you have another comment? Councilman Gamboge.
I vote for number three.
Is consensus?
Councilman Moore.
Yeah, I agree with number three, but I don't think we reached consensus on the previous item, so I don't know if we're gonna go back to that.
We can go back to that later. Let's just, we can keep, we'll go back to that. So, is there a very kind of agreement in number three?
Yeah, I like number three as well.
Okay. Okay, some other additions based on talking to each of you, and thank you for meeting with us. In the introduction, we are going to add a picture of the land use map and where the definitions for the land use destinations are in the plan. There is some concern that it may be difficult to find, so, and we'll have a link to the map where they can click on it and get to the bigger version on the website. And then we also are gonna add a list of what is required to be in the plan, required at 50,000 and any voluntary that we have. So, it's in the introduction that this is what we're required to have and such and what's in the plan. So, that's something we are gonna add and bring back to you.
Councilmember Rusi.
Oh, I'm glad you brought up the maps. Is there any way in the paper version, we could have bigger maps to read in case? We don't want to sit there on the computer for hours looking at the maps. And also, do you have a water service area boundary map in the general plan?
I believe under the water resources there was.
And were there any changes to it? I couldn't read it to see if there were any changes.
I don't think so.
What page was that on?
Well, I'm looking. Well, I'm looking. Yeah, 32. That's our existing water service area from December 2023. And I don't think there's been any changes to it since then. No, there's been no changes to our water service area. So that's the most current and up-to-date map from Water Resources on page 32.
Okay, and it is legible here in the printout? Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Also, on page 20, there was this chart, and I was asked what it was, and I couldn't answer it. So we're going to remove it because it's confusing and didn't really say anything. So we're going to clean that up.
Mayor Protem, can tell me?
Tammy, we all met, you, myself, and Chelsea and the mayor, about the situation, you know, going back again to what this is. It's a, we need a land use map. I don't see that you had included the land use map as we talked about right up front, right under the definition of what this process--
Right here. I was going, under in the initial direction, I'm going to add the land use map and where the definitions and put where, that you find the definitions of the designations in the plan.
But that's on a separate, separate link when you open up the general plan?
No, it'll be right there in the introduction. We'll put a picture of a map and where that information is.
I misunderstood. I thought when we had our meeting, you were going to put it in there now, so we could see that.
I couldn't, I couldn't update it overnight.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you'll add it?
Yes, and bring it back to you.
Okay, and the reason, just so everybody knows, the reason I wanted to do that is because if, if you have somebody that actually is going to use this land use map based on the fact that it's a land use document, and you don't get to the land use map till page 150, I think that's a problem. So I was really hoping we could get the map up front, so for the people that are going to be using it for a business sense. They can read the rest of it later if they have time, but I do think they need to have access to that map.
And it'll also be a separate link, just for the map on the website.
Yeah, that's great. And a list of the elements. Thank you.
Yeah, the, add that, yes. That's what it says there. Okay. So in your introduction, the other information that is in there, the physical setting and history, existing conditions and trends, demographics and regional purchase population, those are all required to be in the general plan, so we can't take it out, and that's that the information that's in there is required, so. So next, we're going to get to kind of the meat of the plan. As you probably saw, that land use is kind of scattered throughout it, because it does touch all these different chapters. So we're going to start with resiliency and sustainability. So land use is a required in the general plan. Prescott Fire Department, that section is required when we hit 50,000. Environmental planning and water resources are required. Climate is a volunteer section, and energy is required at 50,000. So on page 23, at the beginning of this section, we did have some goals and strategies on your left-hand side, and those all deal with housing. So we were going to move those into the housing and integrate that into the housing section where it should go. We didn't catch that, and so we caught it now, and so we're going to integrate it and make sure, we may already have them in our housing section, but we're going to integrate it and then move them out of this section, so it'll go right into Prescott Fire.
Councilmember Rusin.
Tammy, I just want to bring up that it's important that we have all these different elements in our general plan, because other entities, when they start looking at appropriations and grants, they're going to start with our general plan to see if it's going to be appropriate. So I just think that it's more than, like we keep saying it's a land use document, but it's much more, it's very important to us.
Thank you. So there was also a question that came up at our Planning and Zoning Commission from the member of public, that there was no mention of the new state tax 478. That was just passed in November of 2024. So I reached out to our chief. So there was seven, his comment about the seven strategic, the seven strategic issues that are page 25 of your plan. Six of them, he said, was still contemporary and relevant, but on issue number five, which is updated in the plan that you have right now, now says, "Sustainable funding to maximize the impact of voter-approved public safety funding and address increasing citywide demands. The general fund must be balanced to sustain public safety resources while fulfilling overall city priorities." And we do have a section on sales tax under economic development and competitiveness. There is a paragraph about sales tax, and we were going to add more information, try to get some verbiage from the higher-ups, of what we can add in there more about the sales tax that was approved under Prop 478. That might be better in the sales tax section, that already discusses it, but that we can add language in regards to language from, that was approved under this prop. So right now, what you see up there, that it's already been changed in the copy you have. I just wanted to bring up that this is what Chief Durr recommended, and that's what's in your plan right now. On page 33, that makes reference to a table. We took the table out, it was confusing and outdated, and so, but we forgot to go back into the document and take out the language that referred to that table. So we're going to fix that and take that language out. And then also on page 38, in Water Resources on the left-hand side, it was brought up that some of this is kind of too long and wasn't very readable, so we're going to go back to Water Resources to reward and bring back with proposed changes to this section. But now, so we have land use, Prescott Fire, environmental planning, water resources, climate, and energy. So our question to you is that, do we keep all the sections in there as presented under this chapter? Do we move to prove sections as presented with discussed updates and or modifications, which I'll bring up more to you, some updates, or move to approve any sections in the, in this chapter? So we're asking you that, do you want to keep all these sections in this chapter, or do you want to remove any of them or discuss any further?
Well, I still don't know why we're including elements that have to do with once we pass 50,000 in population. We're not there yet. The next time we do this update 10 years from now, we will have to include those. So why we're adding it now just makes the plan that much more bulky, and people will be reading this and thinking it applies now and it doesn't. I also have a problem with the reference to climate disruption. It's a totally new phrase I've never heard before. We do have climate impacts because of both long-term drought and even short-term lack of precipitation that impacts our wildfire risk and the ability for us to reduce fuel loads and other land use requirements that we'll be dealing with. So just some reference to climate conditions would be acceptable, but I don't know what climate disruption means.
And I'd have to defer to the group that proposed, that brought the language forward to explain what's in that proportion of it. And I'm sure there's people here that would be wanting to speak.
So you don't know what it means either? Is that what--
I do, but I'm going to refer back to the specialist. I did take climatology, but I'm not a climate specialist. But we do have people here that are more versed on it, that wrote that and can explain from why it was put in there.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Sapiro to explain it then.
The climate section is one of those sections that has created a lot of controversy, and it's something that we really didn't spend enough time on, I don't think. The science is evolving and changing, and oftentimes--
So what does climate disruption mean?
Climate disruption means, well, I, along with Tammy, you'd have to ask the experts, but from, from a layman's point of view, it would be that the climate change is becoming an emergency. You hear that oftentimes, a climate emergency. There are many people and many scientists, in fact, you can, there's a list of 1,900 scientists that say there is no climate emergency. And now with the new administration in Washington, the priorities are going to change on the funding for research, and I think that the research is going to change and the science is going to change. So this is one of those items where we couldn't come to a conclusion on that, so it's kind of left up to you all who get paid the big bucks to make the hard decisions.
Thank you. Since nobody on our staff and nobody on the committee knows what it means, I think it should be removed.
So the definition of climate disruption is significant harmful changes in climate patterns and weather processes that disrupt normal ecosystems and lead to extreme weather events, biodiversity shifts, and challenges for human societies.
And how does this land use document impact that?
I think the idea in a, generally in a general plan, you're thinking about the impact of, say, additional storms or that kind of a thing. How do you consider that in your planning for the future?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I too was worried with how we opened up this chapter. I believe that there would be no one in this town that would disagree that with the reduction in rainfall or other kind of precipitation patterns, and the fact that we're surrounded on three sides by national forest says that we need to work on resiliency and sustainability. And I think that's a much more eloquent way of wading into this chapter. And I too believe that climate is a political hot button right now, and if we don't have to go there, I'm for taking it out and let's get this land use plan approved. I think the politics are going to, you know, we're under a big change. I don't want to risk everything else that we need for something that there's big, big difference of opinions in this one area. And so I think we could eloquently get into the required elements here and, and move forward.
Councilman Gambogi, have a comment on this one?
Kind of a follow-up to what I said earlier, that in this general plan, we've asked a lot of people with disparate opinions to weigh in, and that's what the plan is. I'm good with all seven of those.
Councilmember Rusin.
I would like to, of course, keep our sustainability and resiliency and climate element in the general plan. I think it's very critical that we keep that in so that we can plan for, instead of climate disruptions, I'd be okay with just saying climate extremes, and that maybe more people could understand that. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Ted. I'd like to leave all seven elements in.
I'm going to ask that you not have expressions of support or opposition. We're just going to allow the council to debate these issues and make their decisions. Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm fine with all seven right now. Thanks.
Well, it sounds like you have a majority of agreement to keep it in.
So keep all seven, even the, so the question, the mayor that you brought up about the 50,000 Prescott Fire Department and energy are required at 50,000, so we want to keep those in too?
Well, I'll make that statement again. We don't qualify, so why are we including that in this year's list of required elements? The next time it comes up, we'll include it because it'll be needed. I don't, I don't see why it should be included now. It's just confusing. And it makes this document more and more large and difficult for people to understand how it impacts the city.
Never question a yes.
Well, I just wanted to make sure before--
Mayor?
Councilmember Rusin.
Well, with our aid and assistant contract with CAPMA, don't we serve an area larger than 50,000?
It's just based on our population that triggers that. But we had it in the last two general plans, that's why it's continued to be in those.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, Community Connected--
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. And I certainly don't mean to be argumentative in any way, and I understand the mayor not wanting some of these elements in here because we haven't reached 50,000, but this is a 10-year plan, and we're going to be there in two years. So it just makes sense to me that these elements should be included in this plan, because we'll be at 50,000 in less than two years probably, and it's a 10-year plan.
Mayor Protem, can tell me?
You know, if we're not going to remove the climate part, I do like Councilwoman Rusin's suggestion in changing it to extremes, climate extremes, if possible.
I may note that, and I'll bring that as a change. Okay. Any more on resiliency and sustainability? Okay. Next is the Community Connected. We didn't get any comments or suggestions, so it includes transportation, planning, and circulation, which is required. Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to come, are we going beyond?
You can hand me a card, Sherry, and I'll hang on to it and call you when we take public comment. Thanks.
So we have transportation and planning and circulation, which is required. Open space is required. Wildlife corridors is required at 50,000, and digital connectivity is voluntary. So we asked that, would you want to keep all these sections in as presented? Make any suggestions for any updates or modifications, or remove any of these sections from this chapter?
Councilmember Rusin.
I think they're important. I don't think we should remove any of them.
Councilman Moore.
I think we should keep all of them.
Three. Anybody else?
Keep them all.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, great, places and neighborhoods. We have land use and growth areas, which is required. Planning hierarchy, which is required. Future land use designations and map and historic preservation that are required. Recreation and pedestrian and bicycle circulation are required at 50,000, but they were already in the plan, so we pulled them out separately and then expanded on them. And then Dark Sky Community and Tree City USA are both voluntary, and we added those because we heard, when we did the survey, that we got overwhelming support for that to add it. So we're going to start first with the land use map. This was discussed very extensively with the General Plan Committee and also with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We want, we're going to add a note to the map that's, that kind of spells out that these are land use designations that are not zoning. They're totally separate. To see what page of the general plan for an explanation of the land use designations, and we'll add a link to the general plan, so if it's separate on the website, they can take them straight to the general plan. So, let's see this one. Okay. So this north area here, which is more than likely our growth area, this is checkerboarded with state trust land and Deepwell Ranch. And then over here, we have some state land and AED, I think, property. So based on state statutes, we cannot designate private property or state trust land as open space or recreation or agriculture or anything that doesn't allow it. The lowest we can go is one dwelling unit per acre. So this is a future land use map. We changed, there was a very low-density description in there, and we changed all that to low to medium density because this is a future land use map. And it is used for future planning, for our infrastructure, for water-- And it is used for future planning, for our infrastructure, for water, and for other important services that we provide to see kind of, have an idea of how this may be developed. So it's low to medium density is one to seven dwelling units per acre. So there has been discussion, and we did discuss this separately with the Planning and Zoning Commission, that they just, they voted to not add very low density back in. It's more of an agricultural ranching type of setting, which is what, right, that is out now in the county. You know, the RCU is a holding zone in the county, and it's all two acre out there. But we know the surrounding areas are more like one acre and two acre in the county. But then we have AED on the, I mean, not AED, sorry, Deepwell Ranch on the other side, which is a mixed use, more high density. So we felt the one to seven dwelling units was kind of a good balance to at least allow something out there. But then we know that more than likely it's going to come in and get annexed into the city, be rezoned, have development agreements and so forth. So we felt, still felt the one to seven dwelling units was adequate for those outlying areas. So the question before you, do we want to keep the future land use map as recommended by the General Plan Committee and P&amp;Z? Or do you want us to add the very low density, allowing one unit per acre, and update the land use map in the major plan amendment table?
Councilmember Rusing?
I support keeping the very low density, allowing one unit per acre.
Adding it?
Yeah, adding it.
Councilman Gambogi?
Is this an either-or question?
Yes, because either we keep the map as is without the very low density, or we amend it to add very low density into it and update the map.
I'm in favor of number one.
Thank you, Mayor. I too am aligned with number two.
Number one.
Well, any areas out there in the county are two acre minimums, correct?
It's a holding zone, and the RCU is the default zone for areas that have never been rezoned or proposed for, for the development. So the holding zone out there is RCU 2A.
So potentially, if there is some development allowed by the county out there, it would be one per, one two acre parcel with a dwelling unit on it, correct? So if we ended up annexing it, we would have some of these residential areas that had one dwelling unit on a two acre parcel.
That would be the zoning that would come in as, and then more than likely it's going to be rezoned because if they're going to develop as two acre, why would they come into the city when they can do wells and septics out there and wildcabs split it?
Well, they might want to have city services.
So we have two and two, we have two and two right now.
Yeah.
I am in favor of number one.
Yeah, I think I'll weigh in on number two.
So we have one more?
Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Two. Okay. We'll add the various, so we have three for number one and four for number two. So we'll add the very low density back into it.
Mayor Protem, what did you say? You said two?
Two, yeah. Well, we'll bring it up, yeah. Okay. Okay, so in regards to the other sections in the great places and neighborhoods, are there any of these that you would like to have removed, or do you want to keep them all in as presented?
Keep them all.
What are the requirements to be a Tree City?
We do have someone from Public Works that was looking into that, and they, they didn't see, they said that we qualified and that wasn't really going to cost the city. So incentives, well, incentives are, well, that's incentives, okay. So we need to maintain a tree board or department, which we have, having a community tree ordinance, which I think we have, maybe, or they're, we're going to work on it, spending at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, which they had looked into it in our salaries, and the time spent can count towards that, and then celebrating Arbor Day. So those are the framework to create a Tree City USA. And it's just, like I said before, just because it's in the plan doesn't mean that it will happen. It's just saying that this is something, a goal and a strategy to come to one that we felt we could possibly do, and the public that when they responded, responded to the survey was supportive of it. So we added it. And just because it's in the plan does not mean it's going to happen because as this is, you're not, you're not adopting the plan, and it doesn't change automatically. There would have to be codes and ordinances brought before you at a later time.
Thank you. Yeah, keep it all in. Councilman Moore?
Keep it all in.
Councilman Montoya?
I'm for keeping it all in.
Councilman Ferworth?
I have a question about dark sky before I can vote.
Yes.
Yeah, I called on you.
Okay, so similar to what the mayor asked with Tree City, I would like to understand all the positive and negative implications on not only the city, but existing citizens and their homes and their lighting, et cetera, if we pursue this.
So we would reach out to the National Dark Sky Association. So we had our tourism, economic development, and probably like three or four other groups have reached out to us over the last five years about becoming a designated dark sky community. It's a great way of marketing the town. We are surrounded by a lot of the county. The county does have a dark sky ordinance that's approved by the National Dark Sky Association. They had that done when the Village of Oak Creek became designated as a dark sky community. But for existing residences, you know, we kind of look, the Dark Sky Association comes and they do evaluation at night of the city, kind of see areas where we may want to look into or educate people about what they can do or possibly do to reduce some of the lighting or require downlighting, like we do for commercial and multifamily properties. It does it retroactively make sure everybody like has to change their lighting. If there is an area, we may try to educate them and encourage people to change their lighting. But any future residences, we would look at their light fixtures to make sure they're downlit and don't shine up.
So there's no penalty to people and extra costs to become dark sky if they want to have their bright lights, they can continue their bright lights.
As long as it's staying on time, that's, this is one of the biggest complaints we get. We get one or two complaints a month about residential properties.
I know, I know there's people that complain all the time. Most of our multifamily housing signs are super bright as well.
And once we get, when we get a complaint, even for residences, we send them a letter saying, you get, the light can't trespass off your property, so you can't shine it out where it's shining on your whole property and leaving your property. That is currently a violation of our lighting code. It's just that we don't look at their lights and make sure they're all fully shielded. But for new construction, we would, and we would encourage people, mostly with remodels and stuff, that they put fully shielded fixtures on their property, on their houses.
Okay, so as long as it's not going to retroactively affect existing homeowners, then I say keep it all in. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Any further on that?
Yeah, Joe, isn't that prohibited as an ex post facto law?
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to retroactively apply it to all the houses built, but we could, when they have some sort of significant change, new build, a new permit for something on the property.
Councilman Rusing?
Yeah, it just so happens, I was at R-WAP today, and a R-WAP lady came up to me and told me she supported the dark sky in our general plan because she wanted to be able to continue to see the Milky Way.
Mayor Protem can tell me?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with keeping it all in. And on the dark sky subject, I think that is something we need to consider adopting as an ordinance. Thank you. And it is.
It would be an amendment to our, our land development code.
Everybody's grandfathered in that has, does currently not have it, so.
Okay. So under economic competitiveness and prosperity, we had no proposed changes. So the land use is, again, is required. Economic development and tourism, sustainable, sustaining a business friendly environment, ensuring a strong tax base and quality jobs are all voluntary. They were in the last general plan. Growth and cost of development is required. Workforce housing is required at 50,000, and the Prescott Regional Airport is required. So again, the question, do we want to keep all these in or do, is there any that we want to remove? And then we'll also, under tax base, where it talks about sales tax, we'll add information about the 478 sales tax.
I'm all in.
Councilmember Rusing?
I'm all in, and I just wanted to make a note as the airport liaison, I'm trying to get together with the airport director and some members of the airport committee because we do have a few updates on the airport element, like add and, remove the picture of the Dells with the rainbow and replace it with a map of our airport layout. Include the control tower, update the statement about the AVO.
Those are updates that we were going to go to make it more, the things that have just recently happened, to update those when we bring it back to you.
Yeah, and include something about the extension, thank you, of the runway.
Okay, and I'll work with the director again, add changes to those.
Councilman Moore?
I feel like we should leave all of them in.
Councilman Montoya?
I'm for leaving them all in, thanks.
Mayor Protem can tell me?
I am as well.
Yeah, I agree with all of them. Keep them all in.
Okay. So next, we have community quality. Prescott Police Department is required at 50,000. Education, library, and community center, all at 50,000. Youth programs, art, cultural events, museums, museums, and healthcare are all voluntary. So some things that we were going to add that came out from the discussion was on page 127 under youth programs to add the YMCA. They have youth programs that they offer. On page 128, under performance venues, add the Ruth Street Theater. And then under healthcare, update YRMC to Dignity Healthcare. So these are changes that will, and additions that we'll bring back to you at the next So are there any questions about any of the other sections that are in the, this chapter?
Mayor, may I speak?
Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you. My only question, and I brought it up in our meeting, but I brought it up in the introduction section, was regarding education. We've referred to the 2023 community survey, and childcare came up as a huge, and it hits not only education, but it also hits economic development. And if we want to be more family friendly, our childcare situation here rated very important and very low. So that's my concern, is that we don't really have things in here that speak to early childhood, and I think it's an outage.
Do you have any ideas where I could find that information?
The YMCA offers childcare programs, and so does Prescott Unified School District. They have the Discovery Preschool, Discovery Gardens preschool program at many facilities in PUSD. So does Boys and Girls Club. Yeah, Boys and Girls Club, excellent. There's good resources.
I think if you could just turn that also into its own little section, that we, we heard the voters in the survey, and we, we're going to be working in multiple areas to see what we can do to influence it, I think it would help. Thank you.
Sure, we'll add childcare and find some of those, add those groups. Is there anything else under this chapter? Okay, moving along.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we leave this section that we're, yeah, community quality, we did have the comment that we, we're going to be going back to on that statement because I believe this is where it belongs. So when we have that conversation, I just feel like the nondiscrimination should go under quality, community quality. Thank you.
Okay, so, so major plan amendment process. So, so in 2002, after the Growing Smarter legislation, all jurisdictions had to create a major plan amendment process. But when the process to, the way they process the major plan amendments, so first, an applicant comes in for a pre-application meeting, then they'll apply for a major plan amendment if it's triggered, and we have to process it all and get it in front of council within 12 months. Used to be these were heard, like I said, once a year, but they watered that down. So now it's required within just a 12-month time period. We have to allow 60 days, so it's pretty much the same process as we did with the general plan. We have a 60-day public comment period. We have all these additional agencies in the state that we send it to, including our surrounding communities. And then we have two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. This one doesn't say they have to be in separate locations like the general plan, so we could have them both in city council chambers. And then one, at least one public hearing with city council, and that has to occur within 12 months. So, and then state law requires two-thirds majority vote by city council. So in 2002, the city of Prescott, through this resolution, created our major plan amendment process. So basically, any change to the land use map from residential to commercial or mixed use, from commercial to residential or mixed use, from mixed use to residential or commercial, or from open space to anything else, and it gives these descriptions, but here's a lucky chart that kind of spells it out easier. So as Chair Sappio mentioned, that 40 acres was the trigger. And then at 40 acres, between 40 and 159 acres, if there are 400 or more homes, just homes, within a quarter mile, then it would trigger a major amendment. And then 160 to 639, if 200 or more homes within, you know, a quarter mile. And I listed that we've never had a project that triggered it because most of our annexations and rezonings were in outlying areas where there were no homes yet. So it didn't trigger anything. So with help from members of the public, bringing us some ideas, and then staff went back and we looked, we created a map of the city of Prescott, and we looked at the vacant parcels in town and what their acreages were. So we had a map that had, these are 10 acre, these are 20 acre, and then we kind of looked at where they were located and what possibly could happen. So that's where these numbers came in. Now that you've approved to add very low density back into the plan on the land use map, we'll have to add, there was a very low density, so it'd go open space, recreation, very low density, then low to medium, and we'll add that. We had a chart already, so we'll bring that one back. And so that, basically, the 20 acres was a trigger for some of these, and the others were 10 acres. And like Chair Sappio said, that this went through a live discussion with the General Plan Committee. We did have this out for the 60-day public comment period at the open houses, and at the open houses, we got pretty good support. I haven't heard anybody really opposed to it. So, but with open space and recreation, so any parcels that are already designated as open space or recreation, any rezoning requests that come through on those properties require a major amendment, and then we have the other triggers for other. This is, only applies for properties coming in for rezonings is the time we would look at it, not for somebody who's developing under current zoning criteria. So we'll be adding the very low density back into it. We already have that at Lickley. And then we'll bring that back to the next meeting, and if there's any other changes that you would like to discuss.
Councilmember Rusing?
Tammy, I just wanted some clarification. If the open space amendment is approved by the voters, requiring any sale of open space to be approved by the voters, is that, can we update that column or include it or something? Because that, to me, the charter would supersede our general plan.
And this, so what would happen is if... And this, so what would happen is if one of the properties that are designated, some reason there's a rezoning coming up, and they're changing the zoning on the property, then we would go through the public hearing process, and then, based on the vote from the council, if you approve it, then it'd go to the voters, I'm going to guess. And then, and then, if it's not approved by council, then it dies. So, it would go through this process, and then we could, then it would be put on the ballot.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I don't think we need to change it. It would supersede this, which means we wouldn't be able to sell it or reuse it. But, you know, conceivably, if a property owner consented, they could also be open space. And then, that wouldn't have to go to the voters to be sold or anything. They may come in for a rezoning, and then it would be a major plan amendment and have to go through that process. So, having it on there, I think, makes sense.
And these are also include properties that aren't city-owned, so they weren't part of the charter, that like open space in a platted subdivision that's been designated on our map as open space or recreation, then any change in zoning of those would require it to go through this process. But since it's not city-owned, it probably wouldn't trigger the vote to go that, because those were, I believe, all city properties, only city properties. Sure. Are there any other questions about this one? Okay, implementation, this is going to be a.
Councilwoman Gamboji.
Tammy, you said we had 10 topics to discuss. Where are we at now?
We're at the end. I guessed 10. We were kind of guessing.
Are we going to, we've decided on everything except number one. Are we going to go back to number one?
Yes, we'll go back.
Thank you.
So, implementation, this isn't a vote. This is to explain that this is going to be a living document. So, all the goals and strategies that are approved, because we didn't want to put them in the plan, because that would double the size of the plan. So, we have a separate spreadsheet, and this is pretty much what it looks like. We have the goals and strategies, what the goal or strategy is, who's responsible, is it like Public Works with city funding, or council approval, or anything like that? Timeline, is it a short-term, midterm, or long-term goal? And then, when it's completed, we never had this before, so this is us being able to, like, report back, hey, this is what we've done. This is what we've done for the public, too, to see that we're actually looking to our general plan and implementing it and using it. So, this is something new that we've added this year, and we see this kind of happening with other jurisdictions as with new general plans coming forward. So, I guess, before we go that, I guess we go back to number one. So, I just need direction of how you want us to move this forward.
I don't know, maybe we ought to take a public comment now.
We can do that.
Let's do that.
Ralph Hess.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Ralph Hess, Prescott, Arizona. I sent you my comment through the portal, and I was going to highlight some of the comments, some of the parts of that comment today, but I've already heard that you're, the majority of you are intending to do what I was proposing. So, I'm just, I'm going to limit my comments now. And that relates to reinstating the very low-density designation into the land use map and onto the major plan amendment table. One thing I want to suggest is that you do a minor addition to what you've, the majority of you decided to do. And if somebody can put the, okay, don't, don't put it up. What you're talking about is reinserting the very low-density designation as one dwelling unit per acre. What that leaves is a gap in the land use map for anything less than one dwelling unit per acre. And what I had suggested is that you change, you do reinsert the very low-density designation, but you add one, equal to or less than one dwelling unit per acre. And the reason to do that is to eliminate the gap in the land use map of any use less than one dwelling unit per acre. And less than one unit, one dwelling unit per acre corresponds with your zoning designation of RE-2A, which is to, one dwelling unit every two acres. And as the way property that you annex from the county that is RCU 2A, that's the way it's going to come in, RE-2A. That's the city zoning designation. So, all you would be doing is agreeing with what the majority has already said, but change the very low-density designation to less than or equal to one dwelling unit per acre. And the only other comment I want to make is, during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, in response to a question from one of the commissioners, Ms. DeWitt informed the Planning and Zoning Commissioners that if they did do this, they did reinsert the very low-density designation, which you hopefully are about to do, that the property up north, which is the state land trust and private property, that staff would designate that as the new very low-density designation. So, oh, I do have a third comment. When you're doing the, reinserting the very low-density designation into the major plan amendment table, I suggest you look at the threshold acreages for minor and major amendment designation and mimic that which is, changes low, medium density to medium-high density, so that you have those thresholds match. Thanks a lot.
Councilwoman Moore.
Oh, wait, Mayor, it was before you decided to take public comment, sorry.
James Helbling.
So, good afternoon. I'm Jim Helbling, resident of Prescott, and I'm here representing the Martin Luther King Peace and Justice Committee. And I had a lot of things to say, but after hearing you and hearing some of the comments, I'm not going to say as much as I had planned. I want to thank Councilwoman Lois for agreeing to meet with Robert Chigag and I and inspiring us to make the change that we made. I do want to make a further statement regarding the Prescott vision, including the ethic of equality and respect for all community members. And all means all. And right, the impetus for us putting our statement in the plan was because we know that is currently not the case. There are people in our community that are not respected, are not treated equally. And so, our, our impetus was to give hope to those people, that Prescott will adopt this ethic of equality and respect for all people, all community members. So, I hope you vote for our statement to be kept in the plan. Thank you.
Tom Riley. Patrick Grady.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Patrick Grady, resident of the city of Prescott as well. First of all, I really want to applaud city staff and the citizen committees for presenting our community with a sound, meaningful, and even aspirational general plan based on significant citizen engagement and input. I also would applaud them for incorporating an implementation plan into that. It's disappointing to hear from Councilperson Gamboji that very few of the 2015 strategies and action steps have been taken. I worked in community planning and economic development in Tampa, Florida, in Columbus, Ohio, and in Phoenix, Arizona. That was not true in any of those communities. So, I applaud staff for taking that extra step, and I think it's up to city council and citizen engagement to monitor on an annual basis. So, after hearing the discussion going a little bit off-script around climate and energy section, one of the purported woke sections of the proposed plan, this is the only voluntary section of the entire plan that you've, some of you, sorry, have said should not be in the plan, it's too divisive. So, let's look at the process for just a moment. So, several of you sitting here were on the city council that authorized the Quad City Climate Collaborative to move forward with the University of Arizona in 2022. It was seven to zero vote to move forward that day. A year later, Klemus from the University of Arizona and ourselves presented both the Quad City Climate Profile, which was for the Quad Cities region, as, as well as the Local Climate Action Options Report that had 40 recommendations that cities in the Quad Cities could potentially adopt or move forward on. There was no public outcry at that presentation about use of the word climate change, or a denial that somehow these climate impacts were real and impacting our community. There was none. There was support. During that process of working on that climate profile with the U of A, we created a working group. That working group included representatives from Chino Valley, from the town of Prescott Valley, from our own staff, including our fire department and our planning staff. It also included the Forest Service, included the Health Department from the county, the Office of Emergency Management, our utility, Arizona Public Service. They worked with us on that language in that climate and energy section that you see today. So, we have really made an effort to educate, inform, and collaborate. Finally, I would mention that if you look back at all of the comments that were taken, both prior to the 60-day period as well as during the 60-day period, there were no written emails, letters, topical white papers like we did from anyone who appears to be opposed to.
Please conclude your remarks, Mr. Grady.
I will, sir. With respect to climate and energy, it's 60-day comment period, there were three. Let's not make this more divisive than it is. Let's figure out ways to work together to continue to have all those elements in there in order to achieve a sustainable future that I hear you all say we desire. Thank you.
Greg Murray.
Hi, my name is Greg Murray. I'm also a resident of Prescott. I would like to, A, just support everything that Patrick just said. I would also like to just say that I wish all citizens had a chance to go to public meetings like this one, and like the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and stuff like that. I think people would have a lot more respect for the time and effort and passion that public servants bring to the table. Lots of us like to complain about everything, but we wouldn't even bother to go to a meeting. So, I commend all of you for that. I would like to support leaving all of these sections in the, the general plan. I think it covers all the areas that are required by state law and the ones that will be required by state law when we increase in population a little more. But just as importantly, I think it gives guidance to our community, to public servants, to staff members, and to citizens themselves. I also think that for young people who might consider moving here to raise their families and establish their careers, I think it's important as an aspirational document to them, too. I know that if I was a young father again, thinking about moving here, this would be an aspirational document to me. So, I very much, you know, applaud leaving all of those sections in. I have to say, too, as a, as a biologist who has spent many years, I'm an evolutionary and ecologist, biologist and ecologist, there is a lot of baloney coming from both the right and the left about the issue of gender. And sex is a binary issue for all practical purposes. But gender is different, and people on the, both the right and the left are seeking to confuse those things. And I hope that you don't get diverted by that. I very much applaud the things that, that a couple of you said about gender being different from gender ideology. It shouldn't be ideology, and it's not, as it's stated in the, in the general plan language that we just saw. Thank you very much.
Sheri Hannah.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So, I'm going to kind of be the lone voice out here, but, you know, I've lived here for 62 years. I've, obviously, I was young when I came here, but I know there's one thing that people see in the general plan that have happened over the years. When things are put in there, they say, well, the people voted on it, they passed it, so we have to do it. And that is the mindset of the people. Yes, you say, well, this is just a suggestion, this is just recommendations, but that's not what people see when they vote on something. And when they vote on the general plan, that's usually what you get back. Well, it was there, the people voted on it, so we have to do it. So, my concern is with the discrimination clause. I mean, this is a land use document. And so, as a taxpayer, and, you know, I didn't know we were going to vote on all this today, but I did take down some notes that I'm remembering. So, evaluating the Prescott 25 general plan along with, following the ARS 9461.05 guidelines for general plan, it's mandated essentials focusing on land use, infrastructure, and growth, while axing pretty much anything that is progressive, overreach, social engineering, or a necessary taxpayer burden. So, the ARS statute requires that municipalities with populations over 2,500, like Prescott, to 45,000. So, there was a question about whether were the 45,000 is a city or not. Well, that's what the statute says. 45,000 is a limitation for municipalities. So, we need to keep that in mind. Yes, in a few years, we'll probably be over 50,000, but right now, we're doing this, so we probably should go by the statute. That's what it says. It's in to include specific elements in the general plan, like land use, circulation, open space, growth areas, environmental planning, cost of development, and water resources, with optional additions like maybe housing, economic development, if it's relevant. So, when we look at this, and then you're talking about moving it to the discrimination clause, which I'm against having it all together, but you want to move it to community quality. I think that makes it more volatile, because now where you put it under a heading, what our community values, I mean, our community, and people are going to look at the, we have to do this. So, you know, I'm Hispanic, I grew up here. I think people have the misconception, too, that, you know, I've never, I don't, I'm not discriminated against. I think when people think that you disagree with them, sometimes people think you're discriminating against them. And that's not the case. We're allowed to disagree. It's called freedom of speech. And I was even approached by a woman that said, you know, you don't support the discrimination. Well, you're discriminating against me. I'm not discriminating against. I'm just disagreeing on having it in this document. I don't think this is the place to be. And I don't discriminate, because I'm a minority. So, I don't, I treat people like I want to be treated. So I don't, I treat people like I want to be treated. So I think moving it onto the community quality, I think it makes it more volatile. And I just think that, also, there was a comment, I think Councilwoman Rusing you made, on other entities start looking for grants, they look at the general plan. So possibly there, I'm thinking, you know, other groups are going to want to do grants through the city and stuff. And if we have some of this wording in here that, like Mayor Good said, you know, the government's going to look at some of this stuff. And I actually read an article, and I wish I would have brought it, because I didn't know we were going to be doing this. But there's going to be a lot of things that are going to be under, looking under the changes, what the new administration has done, and it's going to be something they're really going to look at. So when people say, I don't think that's going to matter, I beg to differ on that, but I guess we'll find out. So I'm just asking you to, don't even put the discrimination thing in there. I don't think it belongs in there. It's a land use for our city, and that's what specifically it's supposed to be for. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Gamboge.
There's an old saying about walking the talk. And we've heard from a number of people today, and I see people in the audience, J.D. Greenberg. I probably disagree with her about half the time. Patrick and Greg Murray, I know I disagree with them half the time. And I disagree with Jim Helbling half the time, and Ralph probably more than half the time. But if we're going to walk the talk, then I think it's important for us to realize, we call ourselves everybody's hometown. And if we're everybody's hometown, then everybody gets a say of what goes in the general plan, and they get a say, just like they do at every council meeting, on whether we approve or disapprove of an initiative. So I wanted to thank Patrick and Greg for your comments, and Ralph. That's once you and I agree. I think that this is Prescott. We're talking about Prescott right now, and we're talking about, are we everybody's hometown? Which means we don't have to agree with everybody, but we have to incorporate everybody's thoughts.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I would just like to make the statement that, from my point of view, a lot of Mr. Trump's, President Trump's executive orders are going to be going to the Supreme Court for a final decision by the judiciary branch of our government. And I, one question that I have, I think we need to decide if we're going to not only keep the new revised non-discrimination statement in, but whether or not we're going to keep it at the beginning, in the introduction, or move it to another section. And I completely support keeping it in the introduction, because the first five sentences under Prescott Roadmap is a very nice introduction. And it ends with, "The city hopes that all people within its limits feels welcome." And I think that's a nice segue into the non-discrimination clause.
Do we have any more public comment?
We do not, Mayor. That was it.
Okay. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I just want to make a comment about Sheri's comments about the discrimination clause not belonging in because this is a land planning document and a land use document. And as I think about that, I think about this entire section under community quality. You look at the section, and there's a section there on the library. Well, what does that have to do with land use? There's a section in there about the community center. What does that have to do with land use? Section on youth programs, art, culture, events, museums, healthcare, none of those have to do with land use. And yet, we all just agreed that all of these elements need to stay in the general plan. And so I feel very strongly that we need to have an anti-discrimination clause, even though it is not a land use element anymore than the entire section of community quality is, because that affects our community quality for all. And I agree with Ted Gamboge. Thank you.
Okay. No more comments from the council, so I'll go back to that first concern.
Yeah, that's the only one that we didn't get overall consensus on, right, Tammy? That's what I had. So we need to know if you want it included and where you would like it included. So, Mayor, if you want, we can just kind of go down the road and everybody can say, and then that way Tammy has some direction.
Well, you know, say, take it out completely. But we'll start with Councilman Montoya.
So I think I'm good with two. Wait, hold on. Approved revised language as proposed language. Yeah, I guess I approve the revised language. I don't have a strong opinion about community quality, it going to community quality or being in the introduction. I could go either way.
So where would you like to see it?
I'll go with whatever the majority is. I don't have a strong opinion. I want it in, but I don't care where it is.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Definitely want it in. I can live with it outside of community quality. I think that's where it belongs. I know Kathy's suggesting we put it on that first page where it currently is. Location is not nearly important to me, is being inclusive and including it. So I want it in.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
I want the amended language that was proposed recently in. I prefer it up in the front, because I think it flows with everything else about the vision of our community. But I am not going to die on my sword if the majority wants to move it to community quality.
Councilmember Rusing.
I support including the revised language, and I prefer to have it at the beginning. Thank you.
Mayor Protim can tell me.
I'd like the revised language if we're going to use it, and I do think it needs to be in community quality.
Councilwoman Gamboge.
Number two.
Okay, you have a majority.
Is that community quality?
That's going for-
And that's the, stay where it is with the new language.
Number two is revised language at the beginning.
Yep. So basically, I'm hearing major consensus for number two. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So to start your next meeting, I'm going to be very busy in the next week. We're going to go through it and make all the proposed changes, and we're going to bring back to you an update with delaying all the changes, even the minor ones. There were some other comments about just some added language for clarification purposes. So I'm going to bring all that back to you. So we aren't making to say that we changed something and I didn't let you know. So we're also going to do another thorough review of the spelling for the final draft, and we're going to bring it back to you on March 25th, and with all the corrections and any other discussion. And then after, you know, the general plan is approved by the city council, then we'll create an executive summary of the plan that can be included. So if people don't want to read the whole plan, this is like a Cliff Notes or summary of the plan. So that's it for today.
We're complete. Okay, we'll end this meeting with a quote from John Quincy Adams. "Patience and perseverance have a magical effect, before which difficulties disappear and obstacles vanish." This meeting's adjourned.